Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the July 10, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, which I now call to order. At this time, the Chair recognizes Corey Scott for our invocation.
Father in heaven, we are gathered in this planning board meeting for Rockingham County. We're grateful to gather to serve the community, to understand the needs of the community, and also, in light of the regulations and the responsibilities that we have as a planning board, we pray that thy blessing upon this meeting, that we will be thorough, fair, and all will be respectful of each other and be able to come to a conclusion that is in the best interest of both the community and the county. And we give thanks that we have this opportunity to meet in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and members, I call your attention to a difference between this agenda and the one that was sent out with your packet. The previous one did not recognize that the special use permit application, which will be our first case, is actually a quasi-judicial proceeding and operates under a different set of rules and procedures.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as revised and rewritten. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Our next item is approval of the minutes from our June 12, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12 meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the June 12, 2023 Planning Board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the minutes are approved. As I said, the first case we're going to hear is what's known as a quasi-judicial hearing. This hearing is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. That means it is like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how the board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions, like rezoning cases. The board's discretion is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and the standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. At this time, we'll call upon staff to introduce our first case, which is Special Use Permit Request 2023-11.
Can everyone hear me well in back? Okay, good. Sometimes that's an issue, so I like to check. As Paul mentioned, our first order of business tonight is a request for a special use permit. If the board recalls, quite recently, we added a text amendment to allow religious schools in the RP District when they're located on the same parcel. The same applicant has now submitted the special use permit to obtain operation permit for that school. It's located at 3652 Price Road in Eden, quite north in the county, actually. I want to fix that just a little bit. This is the vicinity map. It's located northwest of Stonewall and east of Eden. Zoning map shows residential protected in some of the areas, residential agricultural nearby. The subject parcel is own residential protected. This is just to let you know that it is located in the Dan River Eden watershed. This is the land use map. It's in the O2 land use class, which is the rural development class. This is the site plan. Given the scale of this, it's a pretty small scale. We didn't require a truly intricate Lord Surveyor-type site plan, so the applicant submitted this, which does cover the basics for what was decided about the requirements for the special use permit by the commissioners, who changed a couple of things on it. This is just a summary. I'm certainly not going to read it. Some of these things apply to the school, some do not. You'll see some parentheses where it says "accepting religious institutions." The things that do not say that do apply, and they're pretty much addressed in the site plan. The applicant is here tonight and can certainly tell you more about perhaps how many children will be attending and that sort of thing, and when the start date might be. Let's see if there was anything else I was going to mention from the site plan. I mean, from the staff report. The total parcel is about 1.8 acres. As always, for a special use permit, in addition to the conditions, specific conditions of the UDO, I'm not going to read these out, there are four criteria for approval and denial. You will note in your packet a new motion statement that Marzie and I put together that's a bit similar to the motion statement for legislative hearings, but it is structured so that if you make the motion to approve or deny when you read it, it automatically includes approval of the four necessary points as described by NCGS 160D. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran?
I have a couple. So, and you said we had already, we had looked at this, I thought we had looked at this before. Was it this parcel, or there had been reference to it and it was withdrawn? Remind me? Or I might not be remembering correctly, but...
I do not remember anything being withdrawn about this parcel. The pastor for the Floyd Missionary Baptist Church is the applicant. He is here this evening. He was also the sponsor of the citizen requested text amendment that we processed.
Got it. That's what I remember.
That might be what's crossing.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
The commissioner made a few changes to it after you all reviewed it and made your recommendation, that wanted to make sure some things were exempted that would otherwise perhaps apply to public schools and that sort of thing. And that's listed in that table there. Does that help? Okay.
Could you go back to the drawing that was submitted?
Sure.
Okay. Both buildings are marked existing.
And they are.
Where's the school going?
If you're looking at it from the shot here, the address point on top of the one building, 3652, that's the place of worship. The school will be the building just beside of it, and if you look closely, you'll see a little black marked area that says entrance and then playground.
And the building's listed as school building as well.
It's been used as a school in the past.
Okay, so it's already up?
They'll have to get their standard permits, but it already exists. It might require a little renovation, but it's pretty much there and ready to go.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes James Fink.
And any calls for or against the nature of those calls?
Look how smart I am tonight, I brought my list. We had one call about this, and it was essentially just someone who wanted to gather a little more information. We did not receive any calls that seemed to be in opposition or superprophetic, just the one.
Thank you.
One last question. Besides Reverend Engbertson, there's three people who have signed up to speak. Do you know if they have legal standing to participate in the case?
That I don't know. We will, once we throw them in, see if they do have standing. Use our usual practice, let Pastor Engbertson present what he would like to. Then the folks can speak. We'll determine if they do have standing or not, and if the testimony is admissible, and then Mr. Engbertson can rebut or answer questions afterward.
Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, we call on Reverend Engbertson. Before we begin, would you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
All right, well...
One last thing.
Yes, sir.
For the record, please state your name and address.
Corey Enger Breton, 280 Folks, Solomon Road, Stonewall, North Carolina, 27048. I'm the pastor there at Floyd Baptist Church, and we have several ministries that are growing there, one being the church included. A new ministry that we're going to be coming out with is the one that we're here for today is a school. And you can see back on the planning, it doesn't look like it's on your screen anymore, but on the location, that is the existing church location right now. We do have 20 and 1/2 acres across the street, which we are looking to expand the church and the school in the future. Of course, that'll be another planning board meeting down the road, you know, special use permit and all that stuff, but on this side of the road now...
I'm going to take you back to the site point real quick.
Yeah, no problem.
Sorry about that. Did not mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. But on the side of the building now, the existing, where the school's going to be, it's actually a fellowship hall right now. It has a work and kitchen in there, and we've been working very close with Mark Lengel and also the fire marshal as well, and trying to figure out all the stuff that we need for that. We are going to renovate the inside of the building. We've recently painted the outside of the building. It is in very good condition, but we are going to change the flooring in there, update the paint, you know, all that stuff before we start a fresh school. And so, we do got the playground that we're going to be putting in there. We haven't put that in yet, but... So, the buildings there are existing and have existed there for a long time, and so we're just asking to use the fellowship hall. We're going to be turning that building into the school. And to start out with, we're looking at anywhere from 24 to 30 kids maximum that'll be housed inside of that building. And then, we're, there again, working closely with folks in the certain departments. We need to see if we can use the church building now that we have, if we can use the basement of that, things like that for year two, year three, things like that, for us to be able to go ahead and get our building across the road built up and start getting phases on to be able to expand the school. And so, that's kind of where we're at with everything, and love to answer any questions I can.
Anyone have any questions for Reverend Engbertson?
I've got a couple of questions.
Chair recognizes Julie Talber.
So, according to, Lynn just said that there's been a school here before. Is that correct?
I don't believe there's been a school in this building before, but the building has existed as a fellowship hall, and we use it for, you know, church things on a regular basis, many different church things on a regular basis. But an actual Christian school has never been housed in that building.
You would have anywhere from 24 to 30 kids. Do you have our age range?
Yeah, we'll be starting out K4 through second grade. Year two, year three. We're actually, after year one, we're going to figure out where we're at and what buildings we have available, what space we have available, and see if we're going to go year by year up. We'll at least do that. Or if we're going to bite off another couple of grades and then go year by year, it's still all in the planning process.
Thank you.
But we will start out K4 to second grade.
Thank you.
We have some people signed up to speak. Are they going to just speak on behalf of approving this? They have to have legal standing.
Well, I've got one that is here with me. One of my deacons is here with me, doesn't need to speak unless, you know, it comes down to it. He doesn't need to. There is two other ladies that are neighbors to the church, and I don't know if they're wanting to speak or not.
Yeah. They have to be directly impacted by what we're doing here.
They do live across the road from the church. That's up to y'all to, I don't really know if that deems them to be impacted or not.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
One point I would make is that, to us, our understanding is that if someone received a notice, they at least have some sort of standing to be heard.
Okay.
And if they were next door, they would have gotten it, because it goes out a thousand feet radius.
Got you. Janice Durham, could you please come forward? Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Janice Durham, 3619 Price Road, Eden, North Carolina.
And what is it that you'd like this board to know?
Well, I just, you know, we had questions about the school. We had heard rumors that they were going to start the school, and, you know, we didn't know how many children they were talking about. We don't know what kind of transportation they're talking about for the children. And our concern is, it's a rural area in between two bed curves that would have a lot of motor vehicle accidents in that area. So, you know, traffic is one of my concerns, is how much traffic is it going to bring into our community? Are they going to have a van that's going to pick up the children? Are all these parents going to be dropping them off? Or how is that going to work?
Unfortunately, we can't speculate or consider opinions on traffic. We have to have expert testimony to show that traffic would directly impact this decision.
I will go ahead and say that according to the site plan, though, they do, or they are routing the traffic, but Planning believes is the most appropriate route to bring traffic in off of Price and then take it back out onto Barnes.
Which is the way they do the church traffic.
Exactly, but I think that improves the safety of being right there next to the intersection as well. And I believe Mr. Enger Breton can speak later to how their transportation is. He'll have a chance to speak after all this, to respond to anything that y'all have asked.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? For the record, please state your name and address.
Janine Fulp, 3635 Price Road, Eden, North Carolina.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
Well, I am concerned, like my daughter, that's my daughter, we live almost side by side, about the traffic, increasing traffic, and there's numerous accidents in that curve. I know they have jumped a side ditch and went across the churchyard. I've had numerous accidents in my yard. I could not count them. And it just concerns me that those children will be out in that area, and they could very well be hit with a car. And then, the traffic concerns.
Yeah, again, we can't consider opinion testimony on traffic. I'm sorry.
Well, I understand that.
I'm sorry?
I understand.
Yeah. Generally, these kind of proceedings require an expert witness to testify as to any impacts from traffic, or, as I said in my pre-case recitation, things affecting property values, we would need probably a licensed appraiser to testify to that. So, that's where we stand.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it Bobby Adkin? Right?
Yes.
Okay. If you would, please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
For the record, please state your name and address.
I'm Bobby Adkins, 3557 US 311 Highway North in Pine Hall.
What is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
I didn't really come to speak tonight, but I certainly understand the concerns, but, you know, the church facilities and everything is far enough off the highway. I think it's going to be very safe for the, and it certainly will be watched very carefully after the kids as well, too. So, I think it's, certainly this day and time is really a great thing to hear of a Christian school going up, so I'd appreciate that, you know, appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need the Reverend back up here to answer?
Oh, yes, that's right. Reverend Engbertson, if you would, please come back. Can I remind you that you're still under oath?
Yes, sir.
We have a question for you.
In reference to the traffic and the transportation being brought, those kids being brought to the church school, do you have church school buses, or will each child come individually in a car?
I can state for starting out, they will come individually in a car. Later on down the road, that could be changed, especially when we expand across the road into a bigger facility and things like that. One thing I would note about the traffic pattern and all that stuff, we, our church is very much a growing church. We are in architectural stages of building a new church building, which will also house future school as well, and Phase Two, Phase Three of the church building being expanded. And so, as our church is growing, we're actually having church under our tabernacle now on Sunday mornings due to issues with not having space inside of the church, which means there is almost double the amount of cars that are coming in and out of the church on a Wednesday and Sunday morning, Sunday night basis, which is a lot more traffic than was there prior to when I was there. And we have had no issues whatsoever. She's exactly right. We've had people run off the road in that corner and come straight through the church parking lot. Why? I don't have a clue, but they have, and we've actually watched them on camera. And so, anyway, there definitely is a sharp curve there, is a dangerous curve, and just like the rest of Price Road and in any rural area. But we, very much so as the church, we take very close watch and care. We've got parking attendants always out. For the school, that will not be the case. We will not have parking attendants out, but as for the church, we do. For the school, there will be single cars coming in and out. But there again, with, on this side of the road with what we're working in with, we're only talking 20, 24 to 30 kids, and so, a lot of those will be double cars and talking twice a day, really off times as well, starting at 8:30 in the morning, and then, you know, you're out of school by 2:30, and so, your traffic really don't come through there until after work hours. And so, I do definitely understand the concern there, but we, as the church, and this being the church ministry, we certainly are watching that very closely.
Thank you.
And we'll do everything we can.
Any other questions? Chair recognizes Corey Scott.
So, considering how busy that highway is, are you planning to request school signs to be put up on Price Road to indicate that it's a school?
I don't think busy is the word. There are a lot of cars that come up and down that road, but I wouldn't say it's by any means a, you know, like a highway where cars are always coming by. It is fairly busy, but it's not extremely busy. But we will have a school sign in the yard. I can't say year one, that's not something we've looked into. If the county does ask us to do that, we would not be opposed to that. Certainly in the future, as the school grows and more cars are coming in and out, I think that we'll definitely have to come before and have those school zone signs in. And even if that was something that we needed to look at year one, I wouldn't be opposed to that, just there again, because as the church, we want our kids to be as safe as possibly can. So, that's a great question. Thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Chair recognizes Jeff Callan.
As they're discussing about the traffic, and I see the playground, which is adjacent to the building, how are you going to keep them in that area? Is it going to be fenced?
It has to be.
Okay.
K4, pre-K K4, has to be a fenced-in area by law, and so, it will be a fenced-in area, sir. And that's what the parameters are right there that you see in the drawing. That is a fenced-in area, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Much.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes James Fink.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the special use permit based upon the reasonable determination statements that are included herein, including any information, additional conditions that may have been discussed and agreed upon incorporated into this motion to be included in the minutes and the board order.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for a special use permit. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so, sir, your special use permit's granted. The following information pertains to our next case, which is a request for a zoning map amendment, a rezoning from residential agricultural to highway commercial for a property located along Highway US 220 in the Huntsville Township. Please be aware of the following. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, the board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the planning board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approval that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related but not limited to later developmental approvals, including... not limited to later developmental approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the Planning Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given an opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the Planning Board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period is not a forum for dialogue or debate with the Planning Board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the Planning Board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. The chairperson reserves the right to spend time limits for each speaker, which in this case will be three minutes. However, no speaker will be permitted to exceed twice the time limit proposed. No speakers are allowed to address the Planning Board twice during the public comment period. When recognized, each person signed up to speak will do so in a civil matter from this podium. Before beginning to speak, the chairperson will ask that you provide your name and address for the record. Unless otherwise directed, all testimony, evidence, or comments shall be directed to the Planning Board, not to staff or other members of the audience. If you agree with an argument for or against a request to change the zoning map already presented by another speaker, please practice the courtesy of indicating as much when you are called to speak. Comments or outbursts from the audience are not permitted. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will then be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. At this time, we're going to call upon staff to introduce case number 2023-12.
Everyone in attendance and to the board, as we start, I just wanted to let you know about your question. We received four, excuse me, three inquiry emails. We received four inquiry calls, and we received four calls from folks who expressed concern or dislike of it. We didn't really get that many phone calls or emails, but I wanted y'all to know that. So, this request is a straight rezoning, a request for residential agricultural to highway commercial. It's located on US Highway 220, a little bit adjacent to Ram Loop. It's directly, if you look, excuse me, if you were standing at the Eagle Station on 220, looking across, there's the parcel. It's in the Huntsville Township, Stokesville zip code, again, straight rezoning. Here's our recinity map. It's located in the county's targeted strategic growth area in the southwest quadrant, directly adjacent to US Highway 220. This is the parcel. It's approximately 192 acres, according to the county tax map. Currently all zoned residential agricultural. It is not in the protected watershed. You will note, Hogan's Creek essentially determines the rear property line of this parcel, and there is a small area of elevated flood hazard. We have a flood ordinance and can handle that if any special permits are needed or if that area needs to be developed. We have processes in place for that. Otherwise, there's the creek that crosses. It will be subject to 30-foot buffers on each side, so a total of 60 feet to buffer the creek that runs across the property. The same will be true for Hogan's Creek. That can be done either through leaving existing vegetation, as long as it forms, which is preferred, as long as there's enough there to make that 30-foot barrier on each side. But if there's some missing spots for vegetation, that can be added. This is the land use plan map. It's located, because of the way the corridor works and the southwest quadrant bubble, it creates sort of an odd little situation right here. The bulk of it is located in the G3 land class, which is the county's targeted strategic growth area, mixed uses, especially with access to water and sewer. There's a back portion, it's a little bit arbitrary, that ended up in the O2 land class, which is generally more rural, but in the O2 land class, to really qualify, you almost always don't have access to water and sewer system, so. Given that it has access to water and sewer, that makes a little bit of difference. Just read one thing. The Rockingham County Land Use Plan suggests that areas in the G3 land class are suitable for a wide variety of mixed uses of mixed intensities, and especially where water and sewer services are available. Section 4.2 of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan promotes the development of new commercial opportunities while supporting the retention and expansion of existing businesses. Historically, I think this property has always been zoned residential agricultural. I couldn't find any records that it was anything else. Let me go back to the zoning map. I just wanted to point out on the zoning map, we, we have a mix of bordering uses. For the sake of planning purposes, and essentially according to NCGS 160D, parcels that are adjacent from another, or, excuse me, across a road from another are still considered adjacent. So, we have several adjacent properties that are zoned highway commercial. We do have residential subdivision north of there. Camp Carefree is just south of there. Of course, I mentioned this in the staff report, but any highway commercial development that would occur there would be subject to the development standards in Section 5 of the Unified Development Ordinance, which requires certain things, including landscape buffers, especially when abutting residential properties. This was just the consistency and reasonableness evidence that we came up with, Marsha and I, when we created the staff plan, which you guys have read. And as always, if we have a straight rezoning, this is a nonconditional, also called straight rezoning request, and making a decision to recommend approval or denial of this request, all uses in the RA district and all uses in the highway commercial district must be considered in the context of consistency with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan and future land use map, the reasonableness of the request, given the benefits and detriments of the rezoning for the owner, applicant, neighbors, and general community, and the relationship envisioned, excuse me, and the relationship between envisioned uses and uses currently present in adjacent and nearby tracks. No consideration of individual uses may be discussed or involved in making the decision to recommend approval or denial of this request. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Pull up the map again. That one. So, no, 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 the one that, that showed the corridor.
Oh, the corridor map, yeah. There you go.
Okay, so, you said that, so it looks about, looks like about half of this property is outside the corridor, but am I correct in gathering that if any part of this is in the corridor, then the rest of it is considered to be in the corridor?
No, not necessarily.
Is that appropriate to, or is it appropriate to, like, consider that almost separate?
The ordinance.
Re-explain that to me.
Sure, sure, sure. The ordinance does not lay out any rule as far as if part of a property abuts highway commercial, then you have to consider all of it. Essentially, we have about 50% in the G3 land class, and it's just outside of the G2 area, and then the G3 area a little bit further south. And as we know, the land use plan map is, is a guide.
Right.
And their lines are fairly arbitrary.
Okay.
They could have been adjusted a little more to include some parcels here, or some parcels there, but for the sake of simplicity, the land use plan was drawn the way it was. This other half is located in the O2 land class, so that should be taken into consideration. However, water and sewer services are available to the O2 land class, which is highly unusual. That sort of affects appropriate uses, and given the fact that it directly abuts a major US highway and future interstate.
And did you say that this land, that there is a, the watershed, do you, does the land, like, slope and, and I'm, the, I'm sort of working around to the question of, particularly at the backside, or on the, on the upper side near the subdivision there, if a commercial, if, if we do, if this parcel was approved for highway commercial, and a commercial venture, any of those listed, was utilized on this piece of property, what, how would the technical review, or how would the planning department handle the backside of that property where it's closer to actual residence?
Oh, sure, that's a very fair question. So, let me back up a little bit. It's not located in a protected watershed. I just wanted to clarify that. There's a small area of flood hazard on the rear property where the elevations are quite low. There are definitely some slopes on this property. It's hilly. There's also a small valley where the creek runs across it on closer to 220. So, just thinking about logistics of development, there, there's going to have to be some serious excavation grading and preparation for, for whatever use it might be. The development standards in the Unified Development Ordinance require a minimum 15-foot, essentially impermeable site barrier between commercial uses when they abut a residential area. And it's pretty clear that it's pretty much all evergreens, and it must mature to a point where it creates a completely opaque screen year-round. You know, we can hypothetically, let's say we go to TRC, we can request some, some extra things there, and often developers are okay with that, but it's not required. The only thing that will be required would be the buffers around any edge of the parcel where it abuts residential, and at this point, in almost all areas, also where it abuts highway commercial. The text amendments about the landscape design standards that we reviewed recently are still being reviewed by the Board of Commissioners and the Steering Council, so that, that part hasn't changed. So, the stricter standard is still in place.
Okay. And we can't, we're not, we can't put conditions, we're not allowed to put any conditions like that. That's handled at technical review, right? Okay.
It's, just to explain the difference again about a conditional and a nonconditional rezoning, when an applicant places a request for a rezoning, the applicant has the right to choose what type of rezoning they would like to request, period. And it can be a straight rezoning or a conditional rezoning. Now, often, or sometimes, if we think it might be a suitable use, we can suggest, at a staff level, well, you might want to think about a few conditional changes here to make it fit with the neighborhood, or something else a little bit better. But in this case, given where this parcel is in the land use class, the growth area, the access to water and sewer, there was no really reasonable conditional, the request that came to, to our minds, so it was applied for as a straight rezoning. So, conditions cannot be implied, applied, they cannot be discussed.
But concerns from people living in the subdivision would be addressed and answered
Oh, sorry.
by the, by the requirements to begin with.
Any discussion from the members of the public who are here tonight, both at this hearing and at the Board of Commissioners, you know, it certainly needs to be taken into consideration by this board and by that board. And those are things that we can, you know, keep in mind and notify people about and answer questions about if we need to, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Does that help?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, Cindy?
Can we go back to the map that has the, the yellow map? This one, the one that has the different?
The zoning?
Yes, the zoning map, yep.
Yep. There you go.
So, just, just to be clear, and I think you were talking about the highway commercial in this corridor, on the same side as this property, this 190-some acres, there's five, one, two, three, four, five small parcels that are highway commercial. The rest are either RA or RP.
Right.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that this was.
Yeah.
Because I, I misunderstood. I thought you said there were numerous and are a lot of highway commercial, but it's on, they're all on the other side of the road, but not on this.
That's what I meant to point out, that according to 160D, if a parcel lies on the other side of the road, it is adjacent. That was the only thing I was trying to point out. And this, this pattern of development so far is pretty much typical of US 220, which 30 years ago used to be, you know, not that busy, not a whole lot going on. When zoning was first rolled out many years ago, highway commercial spots, light industrial spots, heavy industrial spots were dotted all along the corridor. We have not had a recent corridor study. We are planning a countywide comprehensive transportation plan review and creation. We're not quite there yet to get ready for it, but that would be something that would go into it. So, continuing this pattern of highway commercial development is slightly different than it has been in the past and former land use plans, but all land use plans that I reviewed back to the 90s have identified the US 220 corridor either 3, 5, 600 feet out as growth, growth area, and more appropriate for commercial than some other areas. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Cochran?
I'd like, I'd like clarification on Hogan's Creek, why that's not considered a protected watershed.
Protected watersheds are delineated and created according to the state, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. We have several protected drinking water watersheds here in North, in Rockingham County. To zoom out to a big picture, everyone lives in a watershed. It's, wherever you are, your water, your rainwater flows to some creek that flows to some potential river that is part of a watershed. In this case, this one is not designated by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality as a protected drinking water watershed, or an otherwise protected watershed. Oh, it is, yeah.
The strain from that is eating its water supply.
Yeah, it's true. So, that is something that, you know, when it comes to design time, that will have to be taken into consideration. Most likely, at that point, there'll be some involvement, depending on, perhaps they're just going to leave a huge buffer in the back, let's just go hypothetical, that you'd leave a huge buffer in the back and leave it alone. But let's say they do want to develop a little bit closer to it, that would call for something like the Army Corps of Engineers or somebody to come in to help us out. Does that answer a little bit? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Would you like me to leave the zoning map up, or?
Yeah, you can leave that one up.
If I need to switch it, I will.
Is, is the applicant here? Mr. Will Quick? For the record, please state your name and address. The, the address of your firm will be sufficient.
Certainly. My name is Will Quick. I'm an attorney with the Brooks Pierce Law Firm. We have offices in Greensboro, Raleigh, and Wilmington, though I'm out of the Raleigh office, which is 150 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. No particular presentation this evening, as Mr. Cochran noted, this is a straight rezoning, a traditional rezoning. Happy to, you know, answer any questions you might have, but we are, at this point, considering, on behalf of my client, North Carolina Development Holdings, any particular use that may be appropriate in the highway commercial district. And so, that's really all I have to say at this point. And so that's really all I have to say at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open the public comment period. And the first person I'm going to call is Rhonda Rodenbow.
Rhonda?
Rodenbow, okay.
Yes, sir.
I stand corrected.
My name is?
Please, yeah, name and address, please.
My name is Rhonda Rodenbow, and I live at 171 Carefree Lane in Stokesdale.
You'd like the planning board to know.
Well, I'm here on behalf of Camp Carefree. I'm one of the managing members of the Board of Camp Carefree. As you all know, Ann Jones owned about 300 acres of land there in that area, including the 192 acres that we're talking about now. And when Ann and Gibb Jones bought that land, they bought it because they believed that God had a special purpose for them, something they wanted them to do. And that special purpose was creating Camp Carefree, a camp for children with chronic, terminal, and debilitating conditions. Ann never intended for her land to be used for this type of use. We do think that giving somebody an open-ended zoning, which is what would be happening here, could be very detrimental to the camp, especially if the plan is to use ram loop as the access to whatever commercial buildings are going on that area. When you look at your maps, you will also see there are no highway commercial zones in our area of that magnitude. That is a substantial amount of land to hand over to a developer to do whatever they choose. And I know you're all very familiar with the opportunities they have as to what it can be used for. They span from anything from a nursing home to a hospital to a school to whatever they want to do with it. And your limitations after this point are going to be extremely, extremely limited because you're really writing them a blank check. And we're here to ask you not to do that. We're here to ask you to protect the sanctuary that these hundreds of kids that come every summer have right there at Camp Carefree. Yes, there are service stations across the road. There are tons of traffic on 220. But the kids are kind of buffered from that right now. If you put big businesses and you put huge developments over there, you're going to take away from the time that those kids get to come and for one week to just be a kid, not having to focus on their disabilities. The use of ram loop into that area would be absolutely detrimental to the camp. Ram Loop Simpson Road, 220, you've all heard it many, many times, and I really hate to be standing here again before you because we all know what a death trap that area is right there. I don't want these kids' families having to cut in and out of there and then, once they do get to the camp, fight to try to get into it because that road is our entrance to the camp. So I ask that you please consider the neighbors, that you consider the develop, the people that live around there already in Dogwood Acres, and the people that own farms, and the people that moved there for the purpose of having some quiet lifestyle.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Please, go out first. Chris, I can't read the last name.
I'm her husband, Chiz Rodenbow. Chiz Rodenbow, 171 Carefree Lane, Stokesdale, North Carolina. I've been there in the same house since 1986. That was the first summer of Camp Carefree when I moved in. So I've watched it grow. It's been a big part of my life and my wife's life. Ann Jones was very close to us, and we've always tried to respect her wishes. And that's why we're still there and still doing what we do. I can tell you that the maps are a bad representation because ram loop hasn't been a loop road since they forelaid 220. It's drawn as a loop road, but you can see trees in the middle of it, so I understand it. It's intended to be an access for this property. I don't know, and I know that you don't have to tell me, but we already have problems with that road because Skywalker has a business there, and there's a four-wheeler place beside of them. They get big deliveries in, the trucks don't have anywhere to turn around. So they've destroyed the entrance to Camp Carefree because a 54-foot trailer can't turn around at a dead-end road. And if you look at the map, you'll see why. So it's been a problem. It's going to be a bigger problem in the future. And honestly, I'm tired of answering all the gossip about why is Camp Carefree selling out? Why are they doing this? Why are they doing that? There are internet sites from Baptist churches praying for us because of our new neighbors. Am I going to tell you who they think our neighbors are? It's not our business, I guess, but I agree with my wife in that this is going to be detrimental to the community. Our opening invocation said just made it was to do things that benefits the community. I don't see the benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last name Ryerson. Can't read your first name. But you're going to be required to tell me and your address.
I'm BJ Ryerson, and I'm at 586 Carlton Road. And can you put up the map with the RAs and the?
We'll have to pull the timer off. Mr. Marziano will keep the time there.
Actually, uh?
It's this one? That's the zoning?
Yeah. Where's, do I just, or do you do it? Can you do the one with the satellite view?
More of the sort of the land.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Yeah.
Oops.
Can I scroll back and forth or can?
You can use these arrows here to go back and forth.
Sure. Okay.
I'll leave that there. That's the sort of topographical overview.
Okay.
That's the zoning map. That's just the vicinity map, given the general location. And that's the land use plan map. So certainly you can go back and forth.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, are you ready?
Go ahead.
All right. So I noticed that during your last meeting, it said at the request of county leadership, there was a text amendment made to the Unified Development Ordinance Plan. And quite frankly, for as many of us as have been showing up for this area and the zoning changes that you have been approving and/or come before you with questioning, I think that you probably should have looked back at them and said, are you crazy? Because when this unified development plan was put into place, I think you just absolutely ignored the RAs that said rural and agriculture. You just put whatever you wanted in there and totally ignored that. We are not highway commercial type of people. We come and we live in this place because we want that kind of life. People who buy these houses and developments or live in the city somewhere, they move to Rockingham County because they want to get away from that. They might buy a house in a, in a community that has a home association and they can't wait to get out of it. As soon as they find out they can't put a fence up or they can't, like my mother, she wanted to have a closet here or they wanted to do something there, and, oh, no, we can't do that. You got your choice of three different kinds of houses. As soon as you have that kind of a thing, they dream of having what we have fought and worked so hard to get to. And when we do these kinds of things, you are basically destroying our lives and what we fought and worked so hard to get. What these kids strive for to come to. They want to watch the horses. They want to drive by and they want to see the cows out in the field. They don't want to see concrete. And, sorry. All right, so that's just one thing. I can't believe that we even changed the, for this one thing. I think you all know what they plan on putting in there. I think it's supposed to be house-to-house, what they're putting in there. We don't want it. This community doesn't want it. You've said the benefits of resulting from the zoning action for the owner. Well, I can tell you what the owner's benefits are. They're going to make a lot of money and they're going to get out of town. The neighbors, well, none of the neighbors want it. The surrounding community, well, we're already suffering because Huntsville Fire Department doesn't have enough funding. The Madison Rescue Squad doesn't have any funding. But I can tell you that when you came to the budget meeting, or the county commissioners came to the budget meeting, guess what? Huntsville said, we need more money. So guess what? It's on the backs of us with our increased property values of who's going to pay for what's coming down the pike. And it's already started. So don't tell us that it's not affecting us. It is affecting us. It's affecting us with water runoff. I'm looking at water on basically three sides of that. I know how water runs through the creek along Highway 220, and it's going to be a problem. I don't, that's what we're here for? That's what, that's why we have these kinds of meetings, so you know these are happening.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jeff Scott. I live at 621 Dogwood Acres Lane. And my property backs up right to, one of the maps showed a line of the potential dividing it up. My property is right on the corner of that, and there's a small little field behind my house. It's all cleared out right there. So when we go out in our backyard and we just see the field, we see deer, it's just beautiful. And so I don't have much to say here, but I know we moved there in 2019 and to get away from Greensboro. And it's been a beautiful, peaceful neighborhood and just, all of us in the neighborhood are concerned and nervous about the potential, about what might happen. And the quietness in our neighborhood is just something you can't put a price on. You know, we moved out of the city to, just to have a peaceful presence. Our four, our two kids, the pasture there, the cows come right up to us, and it's just, it's awesome. So, you know, we're just very concerned and nervous about all that. Forgive me for being a little nervous here. But I just like my voice to be heard for that purpose. We're concerned about the future. Camp Carefree set a mouthful, so, I mean, there's a whole lot there that I stand by as well. But, you know, aside from that, we're just, we're very nervous. It's about, I don't want to go in my backyard and see a parking lot or the safety of being concerned that there might be a roaming person through a neighbor, through the parking lot of whatever's going to be there that might end up in my backyard or trash or noise, all the things that you don't want when you come home from work. So that is my concern. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Catherine Williams, and I live in Madison, 2102 Bryant Street in Madison. Can you hear me all right? Here, this is better.
Oh, perfectly. What would you like us to know?
Okay. I'm here in a way to represent the larger public because actually, most people in West Rockingham County don't know about this. I only found out about it a couple of days ago. I have regarded Camp Carefree as a wonderful jewel for the county and for, ever since I've lived here 20 years. And I'd like to say, first of all, I was very concerned to find out that nobody knows who is involved in this group of people that want to rezone this. And nobody knows why they want to do it. I have to say that for the general public, this is very suspicious because for this part of North Carolina, this part of Rockingham County, this is a huge piece of property. As an example, the Walmart in Mayadan, that block that has all of the stuff there in the corner of 220 and 135, the Walmart, the next-door shopping center, all the, all the stores in the front, and the blow-moldage solutions factory behind there, that's only 40 acres. This property is almost five times that large. And diagonally, a stream runs through it that feeds the big lake for Camp Carefree. Then, when you look at contiguous properties, the contiguous properties are only at the front. And most of the, most of the edge of this property is not bounded by commercial highway property. It's sewn, it's surrounded by ordinary people living ordinary lives. There's people with their houses on one side. There's a river and wilderness on the back. And there's Camp Carefree and their lake and all those sick children. And if this request was for a piece of property, just 40 acres at the front, well, I would really miss seeing that cow field when I drive to Greensboro, but I would understand. 40 acres, okay. 192 acres? This is weird. And not knowing what it's used for, it's very strange, very suspicious. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Didn't get your last name right, but you're going to tell me what it is.
Yeah, Brandon Liebrich, 381 Carefree Lane.
Okay.
So I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Although I am an attorney, I'm here as a resident on Carefree Lane and homeowner and a small goat farm owner, have about 20 goats there beside the camp. So I don't want to repeat a lot of what's been said. I think the camp spoke, you know, a lot about the impact it'd have to campers and certainly being next to the camp. We appreciate what it offers to the community and has offered for over 20, you know, over 30 years. I just want to make a few points, hopefully maybe a little different. One, I did want to point out, I noticed it was mentioned that there had not been many public comments submitted prior to this hearing. I did want to point out that it was, you know, notice was given around the time of July 4th holiday. I know myself, I was traveling for work and for vacation for the last two weeks. I didn't get the notice until I came back on Saturday. So, you know, had I received it prior to, and I can't, I can only make assumptions that maybe there are others in our community who maybe didn't receive timely notice or may have been out of town during the time the notice was received. I just want to point out kind of a larger point that I think the last speaker in particular mentioned. You know, I think, in general, I admit I'm typically in favor of people being able to do what they want with their property. But I think there's a significant difference between this and perhaps some other areas. There has been, without significant input from our community, decisions made to, for example, put in public water sewer. And I understand why. The economic impact can be important. But there's not been much input. I may be misspeaking, but I'm not sure many of you, if any of you, live in our community. I don't know that many of the board members live in our community. But there's not been that input, and yet there's been government intervention by putting in public water sewer and not recognizing, though, then, that we should have a say-so. We should have some, some say-so in the terms of what is being done to our area that is dramatically changing. It was mentioned, this is almost 200 acres. And, and I think you have already raised some very good questions, pointing out that most of the adjacent properties are residential. They're not highway commercial. And perhaps this would be a different scenario, I think, if we're part of the front parcel as opposed to the back. You know, 160D-605B makes clear that you're to consider benefits and detriments to the landowners, the neighbors, and the surrounding community. And one thing I'll point out, I think in the staff report, it didn't mention any of the detriments. It only mentioned, summarized that there were benefits consistent with the land use plan. But that's only one part of the analysis here, the land use plan. The other parts are, what are the benefits and what are the detriments? And that has not really been considered, I believe, thoroughly. And we would ask that you consider the detriment, not only to the camp, but the other, you know, small farmers like myself and, and other landowners that have, again, that peace and quiet that we're used to, and that there would be a balancing of interest here in this case. Not to mention some details with regards to ram loop. It's unmarked with, it's not a very wide road and a number of safety concerns. So we ask that you would not approve, not recommend this.
Good evening. Wendy Forbes?
You can pull that microphone down.
650 Dogwood Acres Lane. I live right at the end of the road. It backs up to that property, and we're very concerned about what's going in there. There's, we just got the notice as the last gentleman just said. We have no time to prepare or we have no information about it. We're very concerned about safety and during construction, you know, all the noise that's going to be going on. How is there going to be access to the property? Because there's no access now. Is that going to add more lanes? So we're very concerned about that. And we all did move out there for some quietness and to get away from Greensboro, and we feel like that's just going to be destroyed if, with this big of property, you know, we have no idea what's going there. And we do ask that we get a little more say-so in it since we purposely bought our property out there to kind of get away from all the city life. We wanted to get a little bit away from it, and we feel like that's just going to be ruined with whatever's going there. And also with regards to Camp Carefree, they really deserve to keep the serenity that they've got out there for the kids, and we ask that you just really take that into consideration and all the property owners that are around it, and we have a say-so too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Forbes is the last person to sign up, so with her comments, I'm going to close the public comment period. And now we're going to call upon Mr. Quick to please come back, and this is your opportunity for rebuttal.
Again, we're here to ask for any use that would be permitted in the highway commercial district as part of this rezoning. As Mr. Cochran noted, any future development would need to go through the planning processes for the county, which would be extensive for most any use on a property this size that would utilize any significant portion of it. And so, again, we thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate the comments from the community and look forward to working with everyone.
Do we have the opportunity to ask him a couple more questions?
To keep it on point and relevant?
I will, I will.
We have a question.
I just have a couple more questions. Your company, I assume, hands, deals with development as a business, correct?
Yes.
And is it your... What is your practice in dealing with these types of concerns from people in the surrounding parcels to the land that you develop?
Well, certainly, we will follow whatever processes are required in future development. And so if that includes community comment and community engagement, if that is one of the requirements for a type of development, we'll certainly comply with those requirements. But at this point, without, you know, specific plans, it's hard to know exactly what that will look like.
But you have experience in developing parcels of land of this size in this iteration?
My client certainly does, and then our law firm, we work with, you know, clients throughout the state on zoning projects, on development projects of all sizes.
So this is not... This is nothing new to you?
Not to me, or again, to the client who I represent.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think it's important to also let you know that whatever this board decides to do as far as voting, it only serves as a recommendation to the county commissioners. It's not the final decision. That rests with them, and they will hear this matter on August 21st. So if you want to jot that down, you're more than welcome to attend the commissioners' meeting and go through this process again. Discussion, board members? Ma'am? Motion then?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recommend approval of this request to rezone the specific parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion and to be included into the minutes.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion then. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for a rezoning map change. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. If voted 5 to 2, the application is denied. It'll be heard again on August 21st in front of the commissioners. Thank you all very much for attending. The next item on our agenda is new business. Do we have any new business?
We do not. Sorry, it's loud.
No old business.
Made in a seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Julian Fink. It's Julian James.
Like sign. Unanimous, the meeting's adjourned.